Good evening and welcome to the Waterloo City Council roll call, please.
Mr. Belton?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Finans?
Here.
Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Weller?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
Here.
You must not have mics.
No.
No, for my sake.
No mics. So do we need, like, do we need to shout as loud as we can?
Yeah. Here's your teacher voice.
I don't have that anymore, sorry. Okay, so please bear with us, we have a lot of technology issues tonight, so we will do our best. Use your inside or your outdoor voice when you're making motions and everything. Appropriately, right now, if you would take, let's have a moment of silence, please. If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda, please. It doesn't work.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, as well as approval of the minutes of February 5th, 2024 meeting as voted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor. Opposed, no concerns, we have a agenda, and first up on the agenda is time for public comments. You have the opportunity to come up and speak on any, uh, agenda-related items. Uh, once I recognize you, you may start.
Mary Potter, trustee of the Brown Gym, 1416 West Ford. You may recently have seen this in the paper. This was a little blurb about how the drought is working and why it is important. And tonight I have this man who's in the picture here to talk to you. This is the Regis Frar Nicholas H. Erickson.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Nicholas Erickson. I live at 12 Olympic Fish Street, Northeastern Independence, Iowa, and have worked for the Drought Museum District here in Waterloo for 10 years. It is my job, in coordination with our archivist, Katriva Manning, to collect and preserve the natural history and material culture of Waterloo and Blackhawk Counties, as well as the artifacts and documents that political and military experience since as veterans of this state. To that end, compiled and cataloged over the course of 90 years of active collecting and preservation, the museum district currently deserves an excess of 90,000 artifacts and archival documents and over 2,000 recorded interviews, a vast resource. From the fossilized remains of marine life that inhabited the shallows that covered this region in the Paleozoic and Mesozoic eras, to the tools and broad acts used by George Hanna to build the first cabin in this county in 1845, to the exit personal belongings and papers of the slain five Sullivan brothers, to those pieces that attest to the social trends and forces that shape the city to this very day. All of this, one who wishes to learn, come direct with our staff, book time with our collections by appointment. You don't need to be a professional researcher. We do, uh, we can help one for reasons of credentials. You may find your stories here, and if you do not preserve them, call 31-9234-6357, ask for Nick or Katriva. This summer, with the help of the Year Fendy Foundation, we hope to, for the very first time, get the museums catalogued, digitized, and posted online, where anyone might browse it from the comfort of their own home. Also this summer, besides a history exhibit commemorating the 80th anniversary of Hymday, June 6, 1944, our summer exhibit will be all about dinosaurs. So come see dinosaurs, Land of Fire and Ice, starting May 18th at the Imaginarium, featuring life-size model dinosaurs and simulated prehistoric environments, as well as exhibits of fossils from Iowa shown at the same time at the History Museum. If you'd like to help support these exhibits, call the museum, ask for Teresa. If you'd like to help out as a docent or educational volunteer, thank you very much. Good evening.
We have 32 seconds left to go, and I can't not speak. Um, you know, the trustees are important to, but it's people like Nick that are really important. We can all tell you what we need or think we should ask you to do, but this is the man behind the scenes, and if you ever want to go to one of the things down there, he will talk to you in a little meeting, you can come when we have the accession of things. He's a good man to know, come to the museum and meet him. Thank you.
All right, thank you both for being here. Anybody else?
Okay, okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, my name is Bev Eiford, and I live at 1045 Regent Street. And first I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Um, this is a very important issue to me and some of my friends and neighbors. Two years ago, we had a horrible smell down where I live. Uh, we live next to a lift station, and it was just terrible outside. I can't even imagine having company come over, you know, with a picnic with that sewer smell. That was enough. But then, last year, in October, it started, we started to get sewer water in our drains. Now, I didn't get any in on my basement floor so far, but, uh, a couple of the people have had, not just water, but actual sewage, raw sewage on their basement floor, twice, twice this has happened to them. Of course, I called some people, I talked to Randy Bennett, I talked to, uh, um, who else did I talk to? I guess I don't have the names. Anyway, um, I have a list of the times that this smell has come. It was October 15th, November 20th, December 6th, that was terrible. December 10th, uh, December 12th, December 16th, very bad in the afternoon, and, uh, December 17th, and January, uh, 2nd, and January 24th. And that was really a bad one. That woke me up at midnight with a horrible headache, and of course I couldn't get any sleep. And it continued until 7 o'clock in the morning. Are there any of you to tolerate this? This is intolerable. Now, I've called people and they've been very kind, and retroactively, they're wonderful. But I want proaction. The last fellow I talked to said that there would be someone down there twice a week to check those manholes. I'm retired, I just sit in a chair and look out the window. I haven't seen anybody down there. Maybe they sneak in when I'm going to the bathroom or eating or something, but I don't see them. Anyway, this absolutely has to be taken care of. And can you imagine what that does to your property values? Who wants to buy a house that lives next to a shithole? Just you see, but that's what it is.
Thank you, and I'll talk to Mr. Bennett as well, and, uh, we'll see what we can do, please.
Oh, do something, please.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, how is everybody doing today? My name is Flotil Kirk, you can call me C.T. I've never been to one of these before, and I originally don't know how this is supposed to go, but I just have some questions that are, that need some answers. This is about the housing homelessness and problems and solutions. Where is the help? Where is the transitional housing? Hotel vouchers? Assistance for a working able body, which is what the DHS referred to me as, instead of an individual? Storage vouchers? Application fees? Housing authority, you're on the list indefinitely. Eviction on your record is automatically a no. So why would I give my hard-earned money for an application fee that's non-refundable, only for them to refer to me and tell me, no? I have a list of two, I have two papers with 41 programs. Eastside Municipal Services, um, Operation Thresh Home, Love Inc., all of these different places have turned me away. Where is the help? Should I leave Iowa? I'm not originally from here, but I've resided here for four years. I'm sorry if this is, if I'm getting emotional up here. But I've tried to be proactive and I tried to look for help before I got into $5,000 rent hole that I'm in now. I'm being evicted. This is the second eviction, me being here trying to make a life in Waterloo, Iowa. This is unacceptable. If I have to be the sacrificial lamb to stand up here and show you what it looks like, we are individuals, we need help. The other night I was rolling past a man in a parking lot, and I asked him, "What are you doing out here, it's freezing?" He said, "I'm doing this to keep warm, because I have nowhere to go." I would like to say that Neighborhood Services, Ms. Stephanie, helped me. Police Department, surprisingly, Waterloo Police Department helped me. People's Clinic helped me, even if it's just to have a conversation. And Housing Authority, I mean Housing, um, Code Enforcer, I think it is, Mr. Berry, I think he just retired. He was a godsend. Where is the help? I need answers. Am I supposed to just leave? Now, how it is that someone of 38, I'm a, I'm a certified podiatrist in the nation, I'm a licensed cosmetologist, I'm studying to go take my CNA, and I'm having to do all of this while being evicted and being fired from my job, all within two weeks.
Thank you.
Where is the help?
Please reach out to the mayor's office, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Feltes from 209 Mulberry Street in Waterloo. Uh, you saw me probably 15, three months ago. Um, I came to the City Council meeting to raise awareness about our homelessness in our community. Uh, I think you're starting to see the faces of people, and they are overcomers. They've had to deal with a lot here in this community. Uh, we need to come together to overcome for them and with them, alongside them, ask them. I want to, um, I want to introduce somebody. I don't know if he can speak or not, he doesn't have an address. Thank you for, thank you for the warning center, because that is his address right now, uh, even though he can't use it, right? This is Kirk. Kirk? Kirk is in Momentum. We are seeing a huge increase of homelessness in Momentum, and people are overcoming through the education. We, we are so grateful to Stephanie Shavers for reaching out into Momentum and promoting the Community Development Block Grant. Kirk, Kirk took that class, he's got the certificate. Six weeks into Momentum, he's still homeless. That's a problem. I just want to encourage you to support community-based programming. Uh, we had three people in this term homeless. And thank you Karen Rowe and House of Hope, because one of them is not now. But we need more transitional housing, more community-based housing, more low-income housing that people don't have to jump through hoops to get into. They don't have to lose their jobs because they're being evicted by slumwolves. That's not tolerable. Um, and I, I'm going to a Neighborhood Economics conference this next week. I hope you all join me in Asheville, North Carolina this fall, because we can bring resources to our community and learn from communities for tackling these problems. And we need to do so, because we're in a crisis mode right now. So even though it's going to start getting warmer, that doesn't help the people. And if we're truly, if we're truly a city where we have, we, we offer opportunity for all, we need to offer opportunity for all. Thank you.
My name's Kirk Howard, as Michelle said, I have no address. I'm using, um, the hospitality house as an address to send them things. And I, I had no idea that the homeless problem was such as it is until I personally became homeless, and, uh, it's really made me think about, you know, it's, at, at first, I really seen the ugliness I started seeing in humanity, just, you know, people look at me like I'm garbage or whatever, and, and just, you know, uh, just different, different attitudes. And, um, since I've been really seeking out, um, resources, and I, I got into the Momentum program, and it's, it's kind of, you know, been, it's kind of given me a, a new outlook, you know, I mean, there's still the ugliness out there, but there are, there are people that are willing to help and, and that really have a heart for, for people. And, um, it, you know, it, it makes me myself want, want to get into, uh, you know, some, something where I'm, I'm helping people get off the streets or, but, but right now I have no means to do so. So I'm, I'm just continuing in the Momentum program. As you said, I was in the Home Buyers Program, you know, to, to get myself on, on my feet again. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm definitely willing to do what it takes to, to get where I need to be in order to help others in my situation. You know, I, I, I mean, I've kind of always had a heart for people, but I didn't know until I've seen, until I've seen this for myself, you know, like, there's a serious need in, in this city. You know, I, I, I've walked by so many buildings, they're just empty, you know, big buildings, and, and, and I see others walking, you know, around them, and, um, just wondering what's going on, you know, um. Downtown, uh, three different days, three or four different days, it was pretty cold out, and you're sleeping in a stairwell. And, uh, like, the fourth day, or, um, I seen an ambulance out there, and I, I didn't see that, that guy out there anymore, and I don't know, you know, if, what, if something had happened to him or what, but, um, I, you know, I mean, I know there's people out there that, that are willing to do what it takes to get off the streets. There's, there really needs to be, you know, resources to, that actually help, help them to get back on their feet. Um, I'm so appreciative of, of any, any resource out there that, that does so. You know, the Home Buyers Program, Community Development, um, definitely Momentum and, and all the resources connected to it. I think more, more resources need to get connected with Michelle's program, you know, specifically, otherwise it isn't.
Thank you, Kirk, for coming up and being willing to share your story with us, and we'll see what we can do to help out of this, much as we can.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, my name is George Meeks, I'm a, uh, long time resident of Iowa, 609 East Donovan Street, excuse me, 4th Ward. I, I came up, I, I do this annually, sometime a couple of times. I, I, one of the things I ask, because of the, so much that you have on your, on your face, and I'm going to begin after the whole part is said, so prayer or a moment of silence to a vassal person. And I, in the olden days, back in the 80s and 90s, uh, before most of you were born, the council meeting was always, the dedication was always given by a, a pastor or clergy from there, from the wider community. My, my, my complaint was they didn't always stay for the meeting, but they did come and pray, pray for our community. And because of the, the multiplicity of issues that you're going to face, and some favorably for you, and some that, that you're not favorable for, but you, you got to pray for, I want, you have to be objective in order you can, to move forward on it. And a bad thing is going, I don't know if the bill got, got up to the, how far it got in, but there was, uh, bill was in, was in progress to have the local boards and, and the community, the mayor, well, not the mayor's, well, yeah, community school boards to be democratic, uh, you know, and that's, that's more divisiveness, and we, we really don't need that. When, because if I'm divided, when I sit down at the meeting, I'm, I'm only going to hear what I want to hear, I won't hear at all. So that's, that's, and I'm urging you, and I ask an action, if, if some, some of your work sessions, to discuss the possibility of having, having a clergy come up and, and pray for the, pray for the council board that you do. And, and there's a, a lot of, uh, pastor, Pastor Clayton Smith's right here, and, and there, there's two pastors that, Rudy Jones and Fontez. But there are a lot of pastors that I know, I know they would gladly come. And what it would do, it was, it was, you would get a chance to, it would enlarge your community, you know, wherever they had the service that they're renting, you know, if they get a chance to talk to you, come and see you. I think it would help you in your, in your choices of, of the work that you have to do. And to the, the, the young lady that, that came up, I'm, I, I, um, I'm thankful for the agency that did help you. And, and we know, and, and by, by the nodding of the heads, I, I, I saw the affirm, affirmance from the council that, that, that you're willing, and, and I know some things already they've worked on. But because it comes so slowly, because of the legalities, you know, and especially people that's being forced out, you know, and, 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 and I pray for that. And, and thank for the reference in the police department, thank for all, all that you do, and, uh, bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, excuse me, are there any further public comments?
This is Andrew S. Lott, Senator Falls. Um, I'll be reading the full draft of the ceasefire resolution that was discussed earlier in the work session. One, to let the public know of the specific asks in the resolution, and two, to reflect the updated, um, numbers of those murdered and injured by the state of Israel. But I want to reiterate that these numbers will never indicate the wholeness of the Palestinian lives that they represent, and that Palestinian life cannot be solely defined by the current tragedy, tragedies that they're experiencing. And I want to reiterate that this is a resolution and not, um, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the word that was proposed during the work session.
Proclamation.
Proclamation, thank you. And that, that the need for this being a proclamation is not stemming from the community, and if you're advocating for it to become a proclamation, then the community deserves, um, to have an explanation for that, as it's more ceremonial than the, um, than a resolution and the, the policy influences that, that it's. So resolution supporting a permanent ceasefire in Palestine and Israel, the return of all hostages, and the delivery of humanitarian aid, and affirming opposition to anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab bigotry, with the aim of achieving a just and lasting political solution. Whereas all human life is precious, and the targeting of civilians is a violation of international humanitarian law, whereas approximately 1,200 Israelis were killed on October 7th, over 29,000 Palestinians have been killed, of which over 11,500 were children, with over 69,000 wounded, and the, and people of other nationalities have been killed between October 7th, 2023, and February 19, 2024. And where included amongst those life loss are 152 United Nations staff, over 300 healthcare workers, and 88 journalists. And whereas continued hostilities have forced 85% of Palestinians in Gaza and 5 to 10% of Israelis to flee their homes. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk without immediate permanent ceasefire, restoration of basic necessities, and delivery of adequate and unconditional humanitarian aid without delay to Palestinian civilian non-commites. And whereas more than 100 Israeli hostages are held by Hamas, and more than 7,000 Palestinian hostages are held without due process under Israeli martial law. And whereas the US government and our elected leaders hold immense diplomatic power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives, and US law requires that foreign military aid not be used in the contravention of international law. And whereas the US provides ongoing military aid to Israel, of which approximately 26,423,948 dollars came from Iowa taxpayers in 2022. And whereas the majority of nations in the UN have voted in favor of a ceasefire resolution, and millions of people worldwide, including residents of Waterloo, have joined in peaceful protest on October 7th to amplify this call.
Brian Hummer, 325 East Park, Waterloo, Iowa. Um, I want to first express sincere thank you to those of you that have embraced this ceasefire proclamation, I'm sorry, ceasefire resolution, not proclamation. It does, I like hearing you say that small voices can do something in a community, especially what I heard during the work session. I heard four voices saying they support the idea of getting a resolution out and getting it voted on. Why are we talking proclamation now? When I heard four of seven say they support the idea. I do want to urge the council to continue with a resolution, not a proclamation. These small voices come to you every night, every meeting. Uh, there may or may not be 100 people opposed to this, but they're not here, they're not speaking to you. They don't take the time out of their night to come and stand right here. Uh, I don't have much more to say than that. To, to those of you that do support it, please continue to hold on for a resolution. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Maria Guatara. Um, so I want to talk to you about the Human Rights Commission Courageous Conversation that I was at Thursday night, I know some of you were there. And, um, we had on the panel a man named Yasser Daga, who's a Palestinian-Iowan resident, whose father was pulled out of Gaza very recently, um, and was sitting there in the audience with us. So I asked Yasser what it would do for him and for, as a representative of his community, um, what it would do for him to hear a ceasefire resolution has been passed. And what he said to me was that seeing people come out and be supportive and talk about why they are supportive makes us feel like a part of the community. It shows that people are seeing what we are going through, they see our humanity, and it's unimaginable what we are feeling here, having lost family members. To wake up then to go to work hurts. To go through our daily lives hurts. So to see the support in the community gives us hope and a reason to continue and to continue working within the community, right? So he said, "Do not listen to anyone that says that local ordinances and local resolutions don't matter. It matters so much to the people within our community who are going through this, these painful throes every night to wake up and wonder if your family members have made it through the night." Um, so that hurt, you can do something about, something concrete, something substantial, and that's a resolution. A proclamation was discussed in the work session, right? So to pass a proclamation is to undercut the power that we have, that you have as our local government. Um, the key difference is that then you are not sending to our federal and state governments the ask that we have for a ceasefire resolution. So I wanted to, um, also echo, uh, someone, Brian's talking before about the fact that we are showing up, right? I know that there are voices, but we are the voices showing up. We come in and we will be here time and time again, and, um, you can show up for us as well. Before this meeting, I tried I tried to print off a list from Al Jazeera of only half of the children who have been killed in Gaza. We know this is terrible. When it was single spaced at 10-point font, it was 156 pages long. I put it in three columns, eight-point sized font, 96 pages. We can do better than a proclamation. It is vital that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, Charlie Grove. I live at 1426 Jamrock Drive. I originally came to speak about the ceasefire resolution, which I do support, and I do think it should continue to be a resolution. But I was really moved by some of the things that people came up here and said. I was, I'm a formerly homeless person. I'm lucky enough that I am on Section 8. But it, Section 8 itself is not enough. And there's not enough housing options for people who get that. And then even being on it, so much of your money, like any money you make, it just gets taken away from you. So to be able to even build yourself up while on Section 8, the program that is supposed to be like the one that helps people get out of homelessness, and people can't even get out of it that way. My mother was on Section 8 for 23 years, and thank God she was able to keep it. She died at 58 because she was poor, and that's what happens to poor people. They die young because they have to work their whole lives. They don't get to own a business and have other people do their job for them and take all the money away. And that's what's happening in this community. Big corporations and big real estate investment companies are coming in. They're buying our land. They're opening their big companies. They're opening their big horrible apartment buildings, and they're taking all of the money out of our community. All of this money, all of the money that we're making, that we're working at our jobs, is leaving Waterloo, just like all of the people are leaving Waterloo because there is no opportunity. There is no future for people in this city. And I want to leave. I love this city so much, and I want to leave. And I really wish people would do something. But you don't because we don't have to. Because this, we're the little people, and we don't have lives that matter, just like the people in Palestine. They're too small for you. They're too small for you to care, even though 30,000 people have died. That's a tiny number to people here. Who cares about 30,000? Who cares about a million? Who cares about anything? That's what people in this town and in this country feel. Who cares about anything? Caring sucks. Caring's boring. I hate caring about things, but we have to. We have to care about things. We have to care about each other. We have to care about our neighbors, and we have to care about our community. And we have to know what community means. It means taking care of each other, and we're not doing that. And you should be, because we elected you to.
Hello, my name is Whitney Mercy, and I'm a resident of Waterloo. First, I want to clarify that I'm speaking here today solely as a Waterloo resident and taxpayer, and I'm not up here representing my place of employment, so there's no need to further reach out to my employer. Secondly, I am here to address my support for a ceasefire resolution, not proclamation, as a proclamation does not pressure our state. Last Thursday at the Courageous Conversation hosted by the Human Rights Commission, I had the opportunity to learn some crucial insights. Since we only saw two of you there, let me recount some things that we learned. We heard firsthand accounts from individuals in Cedar Valley who have experienced life as Palestinians, both locally and in Gaza. These narratives provided a deep historical context shedding light on centuries of occupation apartheid, ethnic cleansing inflicted inflicted on Palestinians. From these brave individuals who had to relive their accounts, we learned about the fundamental right of every person to live freely and inherently valued of human life. Additionally, we discussed the importance of local government taking a stand, as we heard from Amelia, especially given the alarming legislative efforts at the state level that will suppress protests for a ceasefire in Gaza. We learned that what it would mean to humans in Cedar Valley if their local city councils stood for a ceasefire resolution. This is a local issue. These issues are not abstract. They're deeply personal and local, and we have residents in our city who feel unsafe, and students missing classes due to fear of hate crimes. Even the Waterloo's mosque has not heard from their city council rep or city. This is nearly, not merely a symbolic gesture. It's a matter of life and death. Innocent people are dying daily. It's essential to recognize as of now, after passing the latest military aid package, that 124 million Iowa's tax dollars was allocated to military aid rather than humanitarian assistance, resulting in devastation for our civilians. That means bombs, bombs and weapons that say made in the USA. This is a local issue. I don't want my tax money paying for weapons to end innocent human life. There is something that we can do. Passing this local resolution will exert pressure on our state and federal governments, urging them to align with the majority of Americans who are calling for a ceasefire. Let's put things to perspective. 66% of Americans support the call for a ceasefire, yet our government fails to listen. We can't ignore this harrowing reality. One child dies in Gaza every 10 minutes. The situation is nothing but a real-life genocide. To further emphasize the urgency of the matter, allow me to share some current statistics regarding Israel's actions in Gaza, as reported by a journalist on the ground today, February 19th. In the last 24 hours alone, at least 100 Palestinians have been killed. The UN has reported credible allegations of arbitrary detention, execution, sexual assault of Palestinian women, and children in Gaza held captive. Since October 7th, as you heard, 29,000 Palestinians have been killed and 69 have been injured in Israeli acts on the Gaza Strip. We are witnessing a humanitarian crisis unfold in real time, with innocent people being starved, murdered, and held captive. As citizens of the United States and of Iowa, we possess a unique superpower that is the ability to stand with those who are being poorly oppressed.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Kevell Carrcrush. I live on Wood and Hour Road over in Greenbrier, Greenbrier. I'm I'm very uncomfortable being up here. I don't talk. I'm a blue collar man. I just work. But I've been to several of these city council meetings, and it's very frustrating to watch the people who my packs are, who are assisted extensively elected by us, tell us that it is not a local issue that our tax dollars are going to fund the genocide. I can go on Facebook every single day and see dead children. And yet I still gotta go to work and work 60 hours a fucking week to.
Please find your language.
Very sorry.
I understand.
I still gotta go and work 60 hours a week and have that money taxed, go to pay for the death of innocent civilians. And to hear you guys say that that's not a local issue is just pathetic. It's disgusting. It doesn't make me want to be a community member. It doesn't make me want to be a part of Waterloo or Iowa. That's all.
All right, last call for anybody with any comments. Thank you, brother men.
Hello, my name is Erica Rissy, and based on your smug response, I'm gonna clarify also that I'm not here on behalf of my wife's place of employment. I am here as a constituent. Here today as a constituent and advocate for a resolution, not proclamation, yes, we want you to do work. We want you to do something for a ceasefire for Palestinians. I come to you today with the same urgency that I have for 135 days in support of a firm resolve to address the humanitarian crisis happening to Palestinians at our very tax dollars. The stories shared at the recent Human Rights Commission meeting of local Palestinians and community leaders who have experienced firsthand the devastation of war and of being prisoners of war underscores the human toll of this conflict. Providing crucial historical context and dispelling misinformation misinformation such as the alleged broken ceasefire on October 7th, as an actor at least stated in a previous city council meeting and public comment. Instead, teaching us of their lived context and history, shedding a light on centuries of occupation, apartheid, and ethnic cleansing inflicted on Palestinians. We must demand accountability for our government and ensure that our actions are in accordance with the international law and humanitarian principles. And we have to support our very neighbors in their grief, in their safety, the very people in our community, in this local issue. To address some comments from the work session today, supporting a ceasefire does not mean taking sides. It does not mean supporting one side over another, or even the notion that there are lines to divide humans into sides. A counselor said himself, after talking to hundreds of people, they feel for the people of Gaza and do not want their destruction. You said it yourself. That's what we're asking for here. That's what this resolution is. Period. It means standing up for basic human rights and the dignity of all people involved. It means saying that there's no senseless violence and suffering that can continue plaguing this region. The situation in Palestine is desire. Thousands of innocents have been lost. Instead of recounting this, I'll just say this. Whether you believe it or not, our tax dollars are funding military operations that result in the loss of innocent Palestinian lives. And it's wrong, especially when our very institutions are looking at going out of business or losing so much in programming and staffing because of cuts to public funding, especially these next seven years. Like, oh, I don't know, the Brown Museum? We hear from that representative week after week. What about our very own public library? What about them? I see my daughter every single week. I enjoy that programming. Clearly, there's a huge need for assistance and action for our people. We don't want you to just worry about infrastructure. Worry about the people. Hear us when we're coming and speaking to you. Free Palestine and pass this resolution.
How you doing? My name is Eduardo Casanova, and I'm from California. But at the same time, after hearing him over here speak about our tax dollars being, you know, used to fund this war, I'm pretty sure, like, you know, most of you guys can have, you know, like a super response on your face. Doesn't mean that you guys don't take any of this serious. But yeah, I'm actually a product from World War II. My grandmother, my grandmother's father moved from Jerusalem over there. And then because like about like six months later, all of her neighbors were all slain and killed, you know, in like in the previous wars that's been going on, you know, for a long time between Israel and Palestine. So I'm I'm half Palestinian, half Salvadorian from my mother's side. And then on my father's side, I'm Cuban. And yeah, it's just like, you know, it's just been going on for a long time, you know, all this stuff. I'm not gonna take up the whole time. I just want to say that, you know, it's, it just really sucks that, like, today I was kind of made aware that, like, our tax dollars are, you know, being used, you know, by the government, not by you guys in general, but it's like, you know, just, just in, like, by, by the government, you know, our tax dollars being used to fund a war that not everybody agrees to. And it's like, you know, even though you guys have, you know, you're stern faces, it's like you guys have to remain professional. And I understand that. So I'm not saying it's you guys or anything, but it's like, you know, we just, everybody wants a ceasefire in Palestine. That's all we want.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Joe Gordon. I live at 510 Willshire Avenue in Waterloo. And I'm here to speak against this resolution. And I want to, you know, just ask all of us maybe to take a breath for a second and try to entertain some facts, all right? So let's do that. First of all, I want to say, in terms of war crimes that have been committed since October 7th, the only acts that have been designated as actual war crimes was the October 7th savage massacre by Hamas of Israelis, Israeli civilians, all right? And the use of underground military infrastructure in Gaza by Hamas intentionally concealed beneath densely populated civilian areas. Those are the, those are war crimes. And they've been designated as war crimes by Humans Watch, Human Rights Watch, Embassy International, and others. So let's just, let's just start right there, okay? Those are war crimes.
Let's start 10 years ago.
I'm sorry about that. If I could just continue without interruption, maybe someone can help me with that. So I want to say that when we ask, well, why would, why would Hamas do that? Why would Hamas do that? Well, they do it because, and you'll see on the handout, you can read on the second page of handout, this isn't me, this is leaders of Hamas saying this. It's because their only mission in the world is to destroy Israel. That's it. That's all they care about. They don't care about the people of Gaza. They do not give a tinker's damn about the people of Gaza, okay? In fact, the whole ideology of Hamas is that of martyrdom. And you'll read some of the comments from the leaders of Hamas that say, you know, we're proud of our martyrs, all right? They don't believe the children who are being killed in Gaza or the, or anyone else are innocent victims. They believe their martyrs fulfilling a duty to their extremist Islamic views. And that's the truth. Don't believe me, it's the truth, right? Now, you know, I think it's just really important that we then understand that it's not Israel that is responsible for these deaths. It literally is not. Israel has a right to defend itself. And I will guarantee you, when this is all over, and the history books are written, Israel will not be found to have committed one war crime. Certainly, I mean, the absurd idea of genocide is just insane, okay? And I'll come, I want all of us to get back together when this is all over. Israel has a right to defend itself. It has a right under the laws of proportionality to attack military targets, all right? And to be as careful as possible not to hit civilian targets. Now, it's hard not to do that when Hamas has hidden its military offensive infrastructure beneath densely populated civilian areas. And they did it for that reason, and they admit it. They're, they're, no one's trying to conceal this. They admit it, okay? Now, I didn't really think, I didn't know if I was gonna persuade anybody, but what I want to make sure is that all of you know the truth. Would you make your vote that you know the truth, and I'll be back. Thank you.
All right, final call for anybody out there that wants to speak.
David Garrett, 3145 West Forest Street. If I'm not mistaken, the city council of Waterloo is to conduct the city business of the city of Waterloo. Yes, what happens in the world can affect those of us here. However, your primary concern must be the city of Waterloo. One must ask themselves, is this a city business, something that conducts and is primaried to the citizens of Waterloo? Or is it the federal government's responsibility to handle this? Making a proclamation or a declaration or whatever you want to term it does not necessarily affect what the federal government of this country is gonna do. Yes, it will send out a message. But if there's not enough messages coming from enough towns and cities in in the United States, will it make a difference? Please take care of city business first. That's your primary responsibility, not the, not the world's organization. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would just like to say that I appreciate everybody's comments today, but what I'd really like you to do, if you feel that strongly on either side, is to contact your congressman, contact your senator, and support the president's aid bill. And that aid bill may include 14 billion to Israel, but it includes $10 billion for humanitarian aid for Gaza. And we, we sit back and we say, we can't get this passed. You know, I, I, I'm at awe because there's, there's money that is available to help those people humanitarian aid, and it's being installed in Congress right now.
Mr. Rosa, any other council comments?
Mr. Herbert. The same that I always do. I just want to thank everyone for coming up. I don't know about everyone else, but like I intentionally try to keep a straight face because you can read everything on my face when I'm, when I'm not liking what I'm hearing and when I am liking what I'm hearing. So if you see me staring intensely, it's because I'm trying not to show you or anyone exactly what I'm thinking. But if you've been here, then you know what I'm thinking, and you know exactly how everyone up here feels. So just give everyone grace as they, as they work through, because something will be done. Now, I do have a question. I think it might be for Jamie, possibly. Hey, Jamie.
How are you?
Someone reached out to me asking about the lighting on university. The LED lights have been working. Do you know, you know, those will be back up?
Jamie King, the city engineer. The contractor's working through that issue. These have been, this has been an ongoing issue since they've been installed, and we're trying to figure out the reason why they're not staying there. So all I can tell you is we're still working on it. The city has not accepted that portion of University Avenue yet. We won't until those lights are working.
Can you give me update on that, Frazier?
I can.
Thank you. Any further comments?
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
I also echo councilperson Wilder's comments. And everyone knows how I feel as well. Sometimes it's real dream to be here in these cities. So I hear you. I hear you. I see you and I hear you. And we will keep doing what we need to do. I wanted to, I don't even know, there's nothing else to say regarding the population versus resolution. I also believe we're gonna work through that, and I think it's gonna come out for the best. I don't think we'll settle for a ceremonial display, but we do wanna send a message to President Biden and all of those other folks. I also want to share the trucks have returned to Newell. So they need to know that they can't drive on Newell. That was just fixed and is going to be destroyed again. So we need to make sure we get the message that to drive on Newell again. And then, Mr. Bennett, I'd like to be included in the conversation about the smell coming from this different neighborhood. I'd like to be included if I could. I believe I'm her counselor at this point. We're not sure what the two of us, just between one of us or who wants to share in making that happen.
Okay, thank you. Any further? Do you have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the conference.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion for a brief and simple announcement. The addition of those ten million dollars in the amount of $3,709,703.6 for Monday, February 12th, and $1,455,749.4 for Monday, February 19th.
Second.
There you go. All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call votes, please.
I'm not trying to interfere, but you're hearing us.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
I'm gonna stay in because of a business relationship of number three. Do I want to stay?
So how do you go on the remainder?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Ms. Poitier?
Yes.
All right. So we have a few appointments. Stephen Fairguard for the position of the Director of Aviation. Barbara Reader for the position of Administrator Secretary in Traffic Operations. Don Roy for EMS Administrative Assistant. Daniel Baker to Engineering Assistant. And Keisha Beasley to the position of Housing and Store Restructure. So welcome, Cecily. Any of you still here? Are you peeing or? No? Okay. I know we had a couple of votes here, but thank you. And also, we have Matthew Govert for the Historic Preservation. Terry Pearson Stevens, and Ed Oxen as well for the Historic Preservation. All right, we have those three. Well, thank you for your commitment, and welcome to Waterloo in one way or another. Let's give them a round of applause. Number one, please.
Mayor Potem.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication and notice of public hearing. The issue was not to exceed $8,500,000 in sewer revenue capital loan notes. Series 2024 A stated by a revolving loan.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anybody would like to speak to the public hearing? Going a second time?
Mayor Potem?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Mayor Potem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution, instituting proceeding and taking additional action for the issue of not exceeding $8,500,000 in sewer revenue capital loan notes. Series 2024 A stated by a revolving loan.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Mr. Poitier?
Yes. Number two, please.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by turnkey associates on behalf of the House of Hope to rezone 0.28 acres from R-4 Multiple Residence District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District to allow for the construction of a 6,200-square-foot office building addition located southwest of 845 West Fourth Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an open hearing right now for the House of Hope. Any public comments on this? Going a second time. Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendations of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion received and filed. See filed, consider and pass for the first time in order, it's approving a request by turnkey associates on behalf of House of Hope to rezone 0.28 acres from R-4 Multiple Residence District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District to allow for the construction of a 6,200-square-foot office building addition located southwest of 845 West Fourth Street.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, council? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
And I'm having some issues with the display, so it may not be right where we're at. I'm trying to figure it out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the orders.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs? Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Poitier?
Yes. All right. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that is for the sale and domain of city-owned property to Natural Realty LLC in the amount of $1 for the development and minimal assessment agreement in the amount of $1,800,000 for construction of an industrial building of approximately 46,000 square feet and a future option on Lot 2 Waterloo Air and Road Park 1st Edition located south of 115 Worth Drive.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any public comments? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have closed hearing.
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
I'd like to... There we go. Adopt a resolution approving the sale of city-owned property located south of 115 Worth Drive to Natural Realty LLC in the amount of $1 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a... To make a motion approving the resolution for... Did I have to read that?
To adopt a resolution approving a development.
Development agreement and a minimal assessment agreement with Natural LLC for the construction of a new building of approximately 46,000 square feet with a minimum assessed value of $1,800,000 and property tax rebate scheduled of five years at 50% and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute document.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes. Number four, please. Mr. Childs.
I move receipt and file proof of publication that moves all ten available base city-owned property located at 408 Fourth Street in three parts in the amount $7 for publishing reporting costs for each part, including a part to Jorge Garcia Villa Villa, a part to Jose Guzman and Olivia Ramirez, and a part to Kalina and Kalino Sanchez.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would anybody like to make public comments about this? Going a second time?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
We have a motion to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion, uh, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the sale of base city-owned property located at 408 Fourth Street in three parts in the amount of $7 for publishing and reporting costs for each part, including a part to Jorge Garcia Villa, or a part to Jose Guzman and Olivia Ramirez, and a part to Kalina and Kalino Sanchez and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, questions? Mr. Childs?
I just wanna speak in favor of this approach to envying the city from land. So I'm liking that we're getting little bits of land that we own to the property owner that's owing those piece of land, giving them more property, giving them more tax dollars. I approve this method.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, sir. And I echo that because, believe it or not, we have a number of these parcels throughout the city that are landlocked around other people's property. And the more we can, we can work with these homeowners to accept some of this property, the better off we are.
Okay. Any other counsel questions? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
All right, number five.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file proof of publication and notice of public hearing request by Jason Bond to vacate an eight-foot by eight-inch utility meant to allow for the construction of an accessory structure in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residential Districts located at 109 Oak Ridge Road.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would anybody like to speak to this? Second time?
Mr. Mayor Potem, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendations of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Potem, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, consider and pass for the first time in order, it's approving the request by Jason Bond to vacate an eight-foot by eight-inch utility easement to allow for the construction of accessory structure in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence Districts located at 109 Oak Ridge Road.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for a second, a third time, and adopt said documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
All right. Will somebody take numbers one, two, and three, please? Mr. Childs?
I move to adopt the following resolutions. The running engine of the City of Waterloo operating official pink signatures. Resolution approving the request by JSA Development for an encroachment agreement to allow for the estate of the issue decreed of life along the public sidewalk on Chief Park Avenue in the C2 Commercial District at 425 Franklin Street. And a resolution approving the real estate purchase agreement with Zachary that's shorter for a property located at 1103 Commercial Street in the amount of $45,900,000 for the 2,000 building housing on the near the verdict we had.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on items one, two, and three. Any public comments, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Poitier?
Yes. Four, five, and six.
Mayor Potem?
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
I saw her mouth, and she literally gets really quiet, so...
I'd like to ask that we adopt resolutions four, five, and six. Resolution four, approving a purchase agreement with Landscape Forms Inc. of Calum Zoo, Michigan in the amount of $51,178.46 in conjunction with fiscal year 2024 against renovation amenities purchase and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Resolution five, approving a professional service agreement with TerraCom Consultants of Sioux Falls, Iowa in conjunction with the construction, observation, and materials testing for the cost of $6,692.50 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024 Berth Aquatic Center, contract number 1077, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And number six, resolution approving changes to the city travel and media policy effective February 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Going a second time. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes. Seven, eight, nine, please.
Mayor Potem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First, a resolution amending a letter originally executed August 10th, 2023 with Trillium Transportation Fuels LLC of Houston, Texas for a second extension of 90 days with no additional charge for the design, construction, and operation of a renewable natural gas project at the city wastewater treatment plant in Anarolic Lagoon and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number eight, a resolution approving amendment to a professional services agreement originally executed December 8, 2022 with Strand Associates Inc. of Madison, Wisconsin for bidding related services associated with the third-party renewable natural gas project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number nine, a resolution approving a real estate purchase with Nations Armored Edge LLC and a deed to sell real property to the City of Waterloo in the amount of $22,000, including closing costs and fees located at 233 Gable Street and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Communication? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor Potem, I wanted to ask about the extension, 90 days for number seven. Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Bennett?
Okay, so the extension of 90 days, is that because of something that is happening with Trillium? Or is that because of not having the partnership or whatever this need to do with?
Ray Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So right now, we keep going back and forth through the discussion and just to kind of give you just some highlights. So our biogas supply agreement, the land lease agreement, we kind of got that through legal review, which we keep going back and forth, trying to get to the final definition for the map. We're still continuing the negotiation for feedstock agreement for the living room. Also, the pre-engineering for land and land studies, and the raw wild gas, the design of the site feasibility issue, and then also geotechnical studies of the site. So we're really close, but we just need a little bit of time to find who knows the last few things.
Thank you.
And that's the reason why we also didn't really wanna associate any costs with it because we're really close to trying to get, if we give it some pressure, because I take this one before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Counsel, any further questions? All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Krantzman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs? Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Poitier?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we exit the closed session.
Can you read that, please?
Oh, the closed session on the purchase of real estate in pursuant to the Iowa Code, section 21-5, in parentheses, one, in parentheses, two.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, are we in order?
Yes, statutory grounds exist to go on the closed session with regard to this site.
All right. Thank you very much. We are going to the closed session.